Uh, we will open the meeting. As usual, we are being broadcast live and digitally recorded, probably.
Yes.
Yes, we are. So, that's it. So, we'll start with open sessions. Anyone here for open session?
Well, you're on the agenda for announcements unless you have an open session.
Okay. Anyone else? Which is next?
Which is next.
Anyone?
Stay there.
Anyone here for open session? No? Okay, alright.
We need to wait, cause it's not on the air yet.
She's back there.
Yeah.
It could be the wrong channel.
Lights keep switching from thing to thing, so I think we're good. Uh, okay, you're up. Nice alliance tie.
Look at that, pretty fancy. So, the reason we're here tonight is to thank you for letting us do the toll booth. So, it went off without a hitch, checked with the police chief, everything he saw was fine. I stayed there all day, there were no incidents, uh, and we made enough money to do almost two scholarships.
Good.
Oh, wow.
So.
That's awesome.
It was a very good day.
How was the weather? I don't.
The weather wasn't great. It was, it looked like in the morning it was gonna rain, and they predicted rain in the afternoon, but it actually turned out sunny in the afternoon. So, I checked with John at Rieder Ranch, and they actually had a slow day. So, we did pretty good for them having a slow day.
Yeah.
It was a slow day there, that's for sure.
Well, it's great, and I, I mean, I, the, the, the credit goes to you. I mean, you worked at this. The first time I think I talked to you about it at Price Chopper.
Yep.
Or whatever it was. But I saw, yeah, that was a long time ago. I'm just going through all the proper channels, insurances, I mean, that's the way it's supposed to work.
Yep, yep, and thank Ryan for pulling up everything together at the end, and.
That is right, the insurance.
Well, that was a big one.
So, when's the, eh, so we wanna do another one.
Well, we can do that right now if you like, or we'll come back next time.
Yeah, let's come back.
You said two sco- you said two scholarships, right?
Almost.
Almost, yeah.
Is it, what's the amount of the scholarships?
Thousand dollar scholarships.
Oh, nice. Impressive, very nice.
It was a good day.
Alright, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Better work out.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, next, so, so next, we are Board of Selectmen reorganization, which we try to do on an annual basis, haven't done, uh, haven't done it in a couple of years, but I guess that's where we're at, so it's sort of a standard thing to do and, and, um, you know, we've all sort of been there before and can talk about it. Anyone have any, any thoughts?
Doing a great job, Dan.
I would second that, yep.
Unless you don't want chair anymore.
No, I, I've been thinking about it, cause this has been on here, so I, I, um, I, I think it's easier based on the, the committees that I'm on to, to just do another year, if everyone wants that.
Yeah.
Mm, that's fine.
That's good, well, that sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So, I'll make a vote to, motion to have Dan continue on this, this year for chair of the board.
I'll second that.
Discussion, sorry. Um, on favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Probably abstain, right?
Think about yourself, it's not too much.
Alright.
Yeah.
Aye. Um, so, so we got some other, we got vice chair and, uh, and clerk positions as well. Um, I don't know, Mr. Vice Chair, you have any, uh, thoughts on, on anything?
I'll continue unless somebody else has a burning desire to, I'd be happy to cede that to anybody who's interested.
Sure.
You're still willing?
Yeah, still looking for a year.
I move to, uh, have Mike Spatter continue as the vice chairman.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes. And, you know.
Jeff's the clerk, huh?
Sir?
Yeah.
Yep.
Stick with that?
Yep, sure.
Alright, cool.
As long as everybody else is fine with it.
Yeah, sound too.
It's like a motion to, uh, appoint Jeff for the continued year as clerk of the board.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes, alright. Uh, okay, come on up, Mike. Let's see again.
Nice to see you as well. Here, just to touch on a couple of different things, uh.
Wanna just introduce yourself and stuff?
Oh, sorry, Mike Moriarty, Director of Communications for the Regional Dispatch Center. Um, so just wanna touch base on a couple of things. Uh, first off, um, you have in front of you the IMA. The only thing that's different with the IM rate, IMA right now is that the town of Warren was added to it. Um, the State 911 Department is, um, requesting that I merge all the IMAs from the town into one IMA with one signature page. And that has to be submitted with my support and incentive grant every year now. That's a new requirement by the state. So, that's what you have in front of you. It's the same exact IMA that was currently signed between Rutland and Hubbardson. Uh, just copied and pasted and Warren added to the top.
Why, why do they require, requiring that?
Uh, I'm not quite sure. It's just under the guidelines as a new request.
Okay.
So, this IMA does include Warren, so do you wanna, that is a big difference. Do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so. Yep, so Rutland has already, um, signed in an agreement with, um, Warren to add them into the dispatch center. Um, and the cut over date is gonna be January first, as of right now, um, unless the state sees otherwise. Um, with that being said, um, do they have this with them? Do you see?
I can put it up here.
Or? With Warren coming in.
He's gonna put it up here as well.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, this is my FY nineteen budget on the left-hand side, and the right-hand side is with Warren being added. So, the important numbers are pretty much in the middle, middle page where the assessments are. Um, so currently, Town of Hubbardson's been paying a hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars for their assessment for FY nineteen with,
Can I have a copy of that?
Yep, with Warren coming in, um, that's gonna bring it down to one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars. Um, that's with an additional full-time dispatcher being added as well to the department. Increases our support and incentive as well as our wireless incentive grant as well.
So, okay, so I can see it, they're a similar sized town, looks like their assessments near, near ours, so what, what are, what are some, some potential drawbacks, if any, of adding to, um, a service like this?
Yep. I don't see any drawbacks at this point right now. There's not gonna be any reduced services to the, uh, Town of Hubbardson with the additional, uh, tenth full-timer being, um, hired. Um, I ensured that to the police chief and the fire chief when I met with them, as well as all the other ones, uh, throughout the towns. That was the only concern that any of the chiefs had, um, when I brought this up. Um, and I ensured them that that's not gonna change. We're gonna, um, staff three dispatchers, um, between ten AM and six PM. Um, and then, the overnight will stay at two dispatchers.
So, this adds one dispatcher?
Yep.
And, so, it seems like the, the ratio of dispatchers to population, I don't know if that's a number you guys use or not, but obviously we're adding, we're adding, the ratio goes in the wrong direction.
We're adding a dispatcher to handle the additional call volume.
Okay, so that's, that's somehow it's, there's a formula there that, that says forty-five hundred people, with the history of Warren itself.
Their call, from their, uh, record system, pulling their record system, pulling their, uh, call volume throughout the year between the police and the fire department, and then, um, speaking with the chief in regards to their business calls, um, and putting that all together, and that, that'll depend on if we need to hire another person. And with going over that, they are pretty much the same comparison as Hubbardson. Decently busy.
Mm-hmm.
Community, um, so to not reduce the services to the other communities, we need to hire another person.
So, um, how about, uh, are we, do you get to a threshold where you, you wanna stop adding?
Right.
Towns?
Right.
Are we there?
Nope, not there yet. Um, we're also in the process of looking for a new location. With that being said, it's actually the building right next door to us right now, and looking at relocating everybody that's in the building. That's the town offices for Rutland right now. Um, that would give us more capabilities, a little more, more space. Um, right now, we're limited right now. And right now, we are technically limited in our center right now. We can't grow anymore after adding Warren. Um, if we do move to that other building, we could grow a little bit more. How much more, I'm not sure. We haven't done the study yet on, to see how much equipment we can fit into that building yet.
Now, are you going after the communities, or are they asking to be included?
Warren, I did not, uh, go after. They came to me, and they wanted to come into our department.
Do you have some in mind that you're seeking, seeking out?
Um. I have a couple of fire departments that have already reached out to me as well. Um, they're part of Palmer. Palmer's split up into three fire districts. Um, they have expressed interest. Um, I just haven't had time to meet with them yet and see what their issues are. Um, but they have expressed interest, um, so these are departments that are coming to us.
Okay. And, oh, go ahead. By adding, uh, Warren, the savings to the Town of Hubbardson is about eighteen thousand?
Hmm, yeah, roughly, yeah.
Our assessment will go down eighteen thousand dollars, roughly.
Yeah, yep. Yep, roughly, yeah.
That's on. After adding, uh, a community or whatever, um, is there a performance review? Meaning is some timeframe after the new community is added where, you know, three months, six months, some amount of time where you say, hey, is this working?
Right, um, probably after a year worth of having them in here, um, seeing if it's working, if, if it's continued problems after problems after problems, we'll have to relook into it with the State 911 Department. Um, they are guiding us with this whole process as well.
Mm-hmm.
Christine Wayne Field from the State 911 Department, she's the regional 911, uh, PSAP coordinator, she's been at the meetings, um, and she's kinda guiding us with this.
Okay. Uh, Ryan, anything else we didn't ask?
Uh, I spoke with both chiefs at length, uh, Chief Hayes and Chief Perrin, they both were, they both went to this meeting and discussed it at length and are comfortable with the arrangement. Both of them said that they would also monitor throughout the year to make sure that the services to Hubbardson did not decrease, but I, I was comfortable based on their level of comfort that, that this is something that will create a cost savings, and I appreciate, um, Michael not only does this, but also looks for grants and is trying to find ways to reduce money, so I do appreciate that as well, and coming to talk about it, of course.
Yep, and how does this factor into our, what we budgeted for our upcoming fiscal year?
We budgeted for the number without Warren, so we'll get about half a year of savings if this starts in January.
Yep.
And then, um, reassess in the budget season, but it should drop our assessment.
Okay. Anything else, anybody?
No, sounds good.
Alright, who's coming in?
Alright. Uh, I got more, sorry, I got more than that. Um, next one is the Hubbardson Tower, yep. Um, so I met with, uh, Ryan last week, um, as well with the two chiefs and my project manager. We went out to the site, uh, found a couple stakes in the ground, um, which we believe is the building, the proposed senior center.
Maybe where the borings went?
Um, no, it's actually, it's actually laid out for the corners.
Oh, okay, so it's the corners.
That's what we're thinking. We couldn't find this fourth one, but we found three of them so far.
Okay.
So, we're gonna.
Have it up here as well.
Yep.
Yep.
Red before.
So, that red box, it's hard to s- see, but it's, it's up there. That red box is where, when I initially met with To- Tony?
Yes.
Tony Deluzio?
Yep.
Uh, from Cardinal Services, that's the spot that, uh, myself and him picked out originally.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we're actually in the process, we're trying to get the land, uh, a little bit cleared out right now, uh, cause the brush is a little high right now, to actually go out there and stake that spot out, um.
Did we do borings? I thought we did borings.
No, cause there was no, this is not defined on the map at all with any measurements whatsoever, so the boring companies were not comfortable going out there.
Okay.
Um, so that's what we need to do the next process. Um, so we're looking at possibly next week, starting that process, getting this marked out, and then having those boring companies come out and start boring. Um, from there, um, that'll go to the engineers to, um, construct the tower, and then we'll move from there. And if we have to meet with the planning boards as well, um, make sure there's no issues. Um, I think it's a, what did you say, a hundred and sixty-foot tower that's supposed to be going up, so that's the next steps with that. So, we are moving forward, um, hopefully the steel will be up by winter time, and then they can work from there.
Wow.
So, are utilities for that gonna come off this, now, there's no structures there, obviously?
Right.
So, originally, were you gonna pull power from one of them structures, or right from the road?
No, we're gonna pull it, um, right from, um, a pole that's pretty much where that driveway is right now. There's a pole right there on the corner. We're gonna pull, um, electricity from there, put an underground, underground vault, um, with some couple spare pipes for you guys and, uh, whenever the building needs to be, uh, whenever the building's decided on.
Yep.
Uh, so there'll be extra pipes there for you guys to, um, utilize, um, but there's gonna be an underground vault. I'm not sure where my project manager's gonna put that, but that'll be there. We're gonna run those spare pipes for you guys. There will be a generator, um, that the building, we're gonna oversize the generator, um, it, to prepare for a building at some point.
Do you already have the tower?
Uh, no, then we're waiting on the borings to be able to get the tower. We have all the equipment for the tower, uh, just not the steel.
Okay.
Uh, they need the borings to be able to construct that.
Okay.
So, that's the next step with that.
We discussed with Mark too, that the, the engineering and the actual site plan will be done, and make sure that it's vetted through any planning or zoning requirements first.
Yep.
Or, yeah, that's not.
Or, yeah.
Kicking around for a long time here, so there's no.
Yeah, the state's pushing, yes.
Question, is, is also the potential of the s-, um, cell companies putting, or whatever they call it, repeater or something on it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yep.
To boost, uh, cell service in town?
The signal, yep, yep, there's, uh, plenty, there'll be plenty of space. Um, what the State 911 has required though, if a company does, um, attach equipment to the tower, uh, because it's grant-funded money, that, that money has to go back towards the operating budget for the rec, so that'll further reduce, um, the assessments to the towns.
Nice.
Yeah, that's not bad.
So, that's a requirement. Um, and then the last thing I have is regarding the SWF reach, SWF nine-to-one system. Um, so, w- the rec has decided to move from Code Red to SWF nine-to-one, um, due to the cost savings, um, with adding Warren to the system, um, it is seven thousand dollars cheaper than Code Red. Uh, we're getting all the same, um, options as Code Red, plus more.
So, is it just an annual fee?
Yes, yeah, it's a subscription fee every year, yeah.
Paid however, but it's just an. Subscription fee.
And when will the t- changeover be?
Uh, the changeover already has gone out.
Oh, it has.
I did send out the initial test call that should, that should have gone out to any, um, listed public, um, landlines.
Yes.
So, if, if you do have a landline, you would've got the call, um, last Monday, I think it was, the sixteenth, I think.
But all of, did, did any of the records from the people who signed up for Code Red, did they transfer over?
So, that's, that's the problem with that, is the only records that actually transferred over is the landlines, the publicly listed landlines. Um, if anybody signed up with a cellphone or anything like that, email address, um, those people will have to reregister, um, to get back onto the service, um.
Have we put that out on social media yet? I didn't, I didn't check.
So, we put out a, a news blast on both social medias, we have posters up, uh, in various locations here, and the chiefs have been pretty proactive in terms of starting to do their outreach and making sure people sign up.
They're gonna put it on the board up through our field. I know they had that Code Red thing up there for a while.
And where's the sign up here, as far as town goes?
So, this website here, um, SWF nine-on-one, if you click the first link, it tells you about the types of notifications, and then how to register. You can also get it as an app on your phone.
I get you.
And, uh, the, the app or the service allows you to get everything, so you can get flooded from email to app notifications to text message, uh, everything you need. And it also has a, um, a town component for emergency response, and then a public component for public announcements and things like that. We promise not to overuse, but we will use to keep residents informed.
Um, what it also gives you as well, you can actually, as a administrator, as, uh, Ryan c- could do, is, uh, produce new lists. Right now, um, for the Town of Hubbardson, there's, uh, Town of Hubbardson Emergency Alerts and Town of Hubbardson Non-Emergency Alerts. Uh, if the town does wish to push it out to other department heads, uh, he's more than willing to do that. Um, we, what Code Red couldn't do is make these new lists, like you can have a recs and park, um, subscription list, and people can subscribe to that. So, whoever's in charge of the recs and park, um, whenever they have events going on, they can send out notifications through that as well. Um, so it just gives more, more tools for other department heads to send out notifications and reach the public.
Do we currently have, cause we prob- Cold Red is only done by who, right now?
Chief Perrin.
Yeah.
So, we don't, what I'm getting at is, I know it's a foolish thing, but there's policies for, you know, the parking, the notifications, so we'll have to.
Oh, yes.
Right, yes.
But the good part is the, it's the user that decides what they get, so if you don't want non-emergency alerts, you can uncheck that and you won't get them. So, the list is created by, by the user. So, if you wanna go in and say, I want every single type of alert, you'll get them all that we create. Let's say I'm creating too many about come to the, come to our meeting or et cetera.
That's what I'm talking about, reeling you in, having policies, to make sure that you're doing it.
I will policy myself.
It's a daily struggle.
Is it?
No.
The, the system also allows to, um, set the securities for each administrator that is granted access to the system. So, I can just give Ryan only permission to access Town of Hubbardson Emergency Alerts, so.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, great, they're busy.
So, that's it, it's, yes, yes, very busy, so, um.
So, the IMA, if you wanna sign that, if you feel comfortable signing that, he does have that tonight. I just gave it to you today. Ryan had just received it.
Yeah.
Um, he is only waiting for our town, so that's up to you.
Yeah, I read it before, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, yeah.
I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you just need to make a move.
I'll make a motion to sign the IMA as presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
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 Hopefully, don't sign it.
We've already given a fair warning before.
We're not gonna wait until Au- August twenty.
August twenty, he knows.
Yeah, I know, yep. I appreciate you guys doing that on short notice, thank you.
Michael, does this grant come in every year?
Which ones?
Support and incentive grant?
Yes, that comes in every year.
And then the wireless incentive one?
The wireless incentive is new. We just only received it last year, and now we're receiving it again this year. And with bringing on Warren, it's gonna increase it because of the population.
We'll take that and we'll get the, the, did I give them all the pages and you took the tops?
Um.
Or did I give you the?
What are you looking for?
I think you took the tops too, I think.
There's the tops.
You have them.
I think so.
Yeah.
Cause I don't think they might.
Yeah, yours are stapled together.
Twenty-third, so.
Yeah, twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, I appreciate it, John, I appreciate it. Nice to see you all. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, good night.
Right.
You too.
Thank you, Michael.
Have a good night.
Yep, have a good night.
Take care, Mark, nice to see you again.
Yeah, take, take care, nice to see you as well.
I'll be sure we're clear.
But we have an outlet open now.
Thank you, Ryan, I'll be in touch.
Alright, thanks.
Good.
Diane?
What's that, yeah?
Alright, um, next item, uh, marijuana establishments and sales tax. Wanna lead us off on this one?
So, there's been, uh, the chairman of the planning board asked to discuss this issue with you. Uh, the first part, well, come up and, and talk to you if you, if you choose, but the, the idea being to get further direction about, uh, marijuana bylaw,
Yep.
and then to talk about, uh, sales tax.
Okay.
Is this also in reference to the letter that you sent about questioning whether the option, someone was looking, there was an option to get out of it, because that was something I wanted to ask about? Oh, I didn't, I didn't get that, so.
Thought you sent it.
You sent it.
You sent it.
From someone.
Recently? Oh, that was if someone wanted to, to open, to. Yeah, cause my understanding was if the town voted for that, you can't change the vote to, like, not have. Okay, we'll go over that. That's, so that was a big question I had, and I didn't know if it was related to this, Tom. Okay, thanks. Okay, as Laurie knows, I love reading regulations, right? So, so reading the town charter, it says the select board, our goal setting and, and, and they're supposed to create a vision for the town. So, we passed this marijuana bylaw the other day, and it was overwhelmingly voted by the town. The planning board said at the town meeting, and we've said at other meetings, that we'd like to get the, where do we wanna go? What's the next step? What does the select board feel as they wanna go to the next step with marijuana? Do you wanna keep the bylaw the same? Do you wanna try banning it? What's your pleasure, because?
Head in the sand, Tom, head in the sand.
Yeah. Well, I mean, where we are now, we wrote the bylaw, and it was approved by the attorney general in two days, which is kinda unusual. But it was a pretty straightforward thing. Where we stand now is you can have, you can grow marijuana outside up to ten thousand square feet in any residential area in town or commercial area. You would have, you still have to abide by all the cannabis commission issues. Uh, the other, if you wanna do any commercial type of selling or growing, it has to be in our commercial district. So, the town has pretty good protection about that. It's unlikely someone's gonna be growing outdoor marijuana under ten thousand square feet, but, uh, the way this town is and the way what we want small business in town, we thought we'd have the opportunity for someone who wanted to start a small business that could do that. But they still, we rely heavily on the ca- uh, on the cannabis commission's regulations, and they basically do it. The answer to your question is, if, if we wanna ban it, so we, now we have this, now we have the reg- the zoning in place. If the town wants to ban it, we have to pass a resolution at a town meeting, and then we have to have a resolution at a town vote.
It'll be a ballot also.
A ballot, it bo- you have to do both.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I'm happy to write the bylaw, or, I mean, the change to ban it, or if you wanna be more stringent, I'll do basically what, what you guys want. But I thought the opportunity or the, the decision should be partly based on what the select board wants, since you're supposed to be setting the tone of where the town wants to go, so.
I think the town's kinda told us where they wanna go.
Yeah, they want, yeah, that was why I asked the question, being.
Yeah.
You know?
But what, what margin did it pass, does it?
Yeah. Eighty-five percent, it was a two thousand sixteen election.
Yeah.
Eighty-five percent of the people voted in that election, which is great for the town, and fifty-five percent of the people voted for it, and forty-two percent against it or something. So, it was a pretty overwhelming vote. We felt, that's the other reason the planning board felt we really needed to, um, go by with what the people of the town wanted.
Yeah.
That's why we wrote the bylaw the way we did. It's quite restrictive, it's not overly restrictive. We, what we didn't do was limit the number of, of places in town, which we could've done, but I think, Ryan, you talked to town council, and they didn't think we wanted to do that, or, uh, limit, cause the original draft of it was to limit the number of commercial units to, like, two or three. Uh, what we're required to do is have at least one. You have to be seventy-five percen- uh, twenty-five percent of the number of liquor licenses you have with a minimum of one, which is what we have. So, we have to have one, but we, right now, we don't have any restriction on the number at all. So, if you wanna restrict it even further, you can, by limiting the numbers, um.
Well, and just, just so we understand it, as far as you understand it, the process to, if we ever want to get to that point, takes how long? You know what I mean, like, what, what?
It's based on town meeting, um, I mean, I can, I can write the, the bylaw and, you know, get, get it sorted out through town council in a couple of weeks.
But there's, there's nothing, no, there's special thing in, in, so, so it's not, what I'm getting at is we're gonna get snuck up on here, you know what I mean?
No, no.
Infiltrated.
We did that already. We did that at the annual town meeting, which was a good thing.
So, in preparation for this meeting, George and I spoke about, um, coming up with the timeline in terms of ballots, et cetera, timing it with, it would be too late for the, the primaries that are coming up in September, but November is another time if, if there was gonna be some type of ballot, and then where the special town meeting would fall in, just in case.
Yep.
I, I was really thinking more of the annual town meeting.
Yeah.
So, gives you time, I'm, I'm trying to hold your feet to the fire, but just.
But, but why? Why, why are we now talking about banning marijuana? So, the town voted for it, the town voted for it at a town meeting to pass this. I mean, a couple of people got up and, and said they're not in favor of marijuana, but majority of people said, if I remember, great. Let's zone it properly and see, so why, why are we discussing?
And the ballot, they also voted for it.
Right, so why, why are we discussing banning it? But what's changed?
I mean, we're not, nothing's changed. I've been just giving you the opportunity, and we said at the town meeting that we would revisit this. If, what we passed at the town meeting was a bylaw that was gonna restrict it enough that we had some control. It's a, if, if you don't have any vision for it and you don't care, that's, I would, yeah, I don't care. I don't care, I personally don't care one way or the other. I didn't vote for it, but I'm not bothered one way or the other. The only way I would see is if, say, three or four of them popped up, or half a dozen, and people start saying, I don't want this next to, you know, next to my house. Well, then.
The only way I would see is if, say, three or four of them popped up, or half a dozen, and people start saying, I don't want this next to, you know, next to my house, then it would, you know, people might wanna change their tune.
But then it's, but then it's too late.
Yeah, once it's in town.
Well, you can't ban it.
No, well, you can, if you have three or four of them in, then.
You could, you could limit it.
You could limit it.
But you, you're talking a, really, I would say a minimum of six months timetable, so. I mean, if you guys are happy with it, uh, I don't, the only, there's only been one person that's come to the planning board against it, is Mr. Blanchard. And he only lives here five months of the year, so I don't, but I'm not really bothered one way or the other.
Alright, I, I'm.
Less work for me.
I think we're, we're at a holding pattern, you guys?
Yes.
I mean, it's not like there's any marijuana stuff beating down our door, I mean, you know, s- to come in here.
Right, no, no. No.
You know, they're taking over old, old mills in Fitchburg, and Ethel and Orange, and, you know, things like that, so.
That comes near. No, Michael, disagree, it's just entirely up to you. But the other big issue, which really should be addressed, which Ryan will go over with you, is not a planning board issue, but it's something that I've come up,
Okay. Hmm.
has come up in the conversations, that the taxing of it, even though we don't have any people applying for, for it right now. The town would be missing a huge opportunity if something does come in to tax it, and the select board has to deal with that, now that Ryan.
Are there limits to how much you can tax this?
Yeah, it's three percent.
Of the total revenue?
It's three percent, three percent sale tax, local options, so you have to adopt the local option from the state in order to tax uh mari- marijuana's sales and distribution.
You can also add other measures on top of that, correct?
As, as far as I know, this is the, the one local option that I have, everything else is controlled by the state.
Like, I believe in Millville, they had to buy a fire truck, and they agreed to maintain the road in front of the.
So that comes from the local public hearing, and any agreement that you make in, wi- in terms of any commercial business that comes in, but as far as the taxes and so on. So everything else is contingent on if someone comes in, then you have a host agreement, which can include other, other, um, other things like that.
So would this tax have to be in place prior to ha- having anything coming into the town?
So it's, and I got, in conversations with, with Tom, and it's my understanding, I, I didn't wanna go to council until we had some direction, uh, that once you adopt, or once the selectman decides to go forward with this, saying formalize a vote that we want to put this on to a, a future warrant for a town meeting, then we are protected from any town coming in, if the town meeting decides to adopt that, that measure.
I wonder if firms who do this sort of stuff look for the towns who option the tax, because they seem like there'd be a, a town who's receptive, or more receptive to that sort of establishment, um.
He's paying attention.
I say we tax it, might as well get some more benefit out of it.
Yeah, absolutely, by the math, throw the three percent.
Yeah. Okay.
When you say the town is protected by putting on the intended warrant, um, if I heard you correctly.
Yeah, that is my understa-
What is the date that, that initiates the protection? Is it the announcement that we're gonna do it someday, or is it actually voting out?
So I didn't wanna go to council with this, so I, in my interpretation of, of what exists, it is, once you announce the intention to do it, then that protection starts to exist. But if this.
At the announcement?
Yes, if this board wants me to look into it, then I will immediately contact council and make sure that we're protected and do everything we need to do.
Okay.
That's what.
I didn't wanna spend money until.
Yep, no, I think, yeah?
So how about I make a motion to uh announce our intention to uh, um, pursue a three percent marijuana tax?
Sales tax. Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Sales tax.
Well, we gotta open motions, I wanna.
Before you vote on that.
In, in, we got the discussion phase.
Oh, seconded.
Second, discussion, go ahead.
May I make a suggestion? That is, is at this point in time, it stays three percent. Uh, do we know whether or not there is going to be a potential change in that percentage? And the reason I'm saying that is, is that instead of specifying percentage, you could state it in such a way that you say maximal allowable by law.
Yes, Steve.
Alright, so I'll, I'll rescind my motion, that's a good point.
Thank you.
So I'll restate my, is, okay with the se- who's seconded it?
Yes, I seconded, yeah.
Okay, alright, so you rescind your second?
Mm-hmm, yeah, sure.
Alright, so.
Further discussion?
So I will remake my motion to an, announce our intention as a town to um pursue the maximum allowable marijuana sales tax as permitted by law.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? On my favor?
Yes.
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 My apologies for breaking the protocol.
Well, that's good. Alright, next, contract for legal services, um, which I think we have up front of us, yeah.
We do have that. So, um, under thirty B, under the state procurement law, legal services is exempted from procurement. However, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't follow best practices or, or continue to protect ourselves, so part of the thing I've learned recently in my classes is that, um, we should continue to put any services that we have on contract in order to get the maximum amount of performance of, out of them, and to ensure we're getting the best possible cost, so. We've, um, I've tried to negotiate with your approval, obviously, contracts so that I can observe them for a year, so that the board can observe them for the year, the current ones we have without causing more interim disruption, and, and right now we have KP law, so. Asked them to draft up this contract for you based off our current arrangement, uh, to end at the end of the next fiscal year with the intention of us uh RFPing for legal services in order to try and solicit the best possible uh legal services we can.
Yep.
So this contract represents formalizing that effort, uh, they helped us draft this free of charge, of course.
So Ryan, I think the last time we went out for RFP for legal services was like two thousand fifteen-ish, somewhere in there, um. Cause we thought the same thing, might as, you know, go out, see what's out there, and, and there really wasn't much else out there, but I agree a hundred percent, but we got a couple, we got KMP law, we got a couple of, we got a couple local, local.
Maybe a local, a local one?
Mm-hmm, Gardner maybe.
People who came back, that they were, kind of like solo practitioners that did municipal law.
Yeah.
The problem was they didn't have a lot of the other, other uh real estate and, and employment, and all the other kind of aspects that KMP does, and a lot of times, those solo practitioners ended up having to subcontract to KMP to do some of that other work for them, so, um, it, it's probably in some file somewhere, but it was probably three or four, probably four years ago we went out for RFP, so.
Yeah, it's been.
Since we came on, yeah.
Yeah, it's been happening since we came on.
In my, in my opinion, it's been too long, um, and I've been, as you've seen, going through every single contract, trying to make sure that we're following proper procedure, protecting ourselves, and this is, they were happy to do it, uh, for one year, just looking for, um, comments, it doesn't have to be signed tonight, but just.
No, no, you brought this up before, I think this is the perfect way to do it, you've already sort of rethought the scheme of getting legal money from other avenues as well as uh just our budget, right?
Yeah.
There's some other grants and, I can't remember exactly what you called them, but there was other way to get legal services that wasn't necessarily KP uh through the operating budget.
There is, there's uh many state organizations that have free numbers, I use the procurement line all the time being a new town administrator, rather than asking KP law, that's legal advice that comes for free. We're working on creating a one-page effort for our staff, so that they can have those legal questions answered. Uh, there is still a very strong need for legal counsel and make sure everything we do is done correctly. We're trying every measure we can to reduce our legal costs, and only asking those questions that we need to in order to make sure that we're providing the best services possible.
Okay.
So Ryan, for several years, um, KMP, we had a deal with them for a fourteen, I think it was fourteen thousand dollar retainer, that included, um, any and all general government questions, procurement questions, the only thing it didn't include, I think, was employment and real estate law. Um, that worked well for a while, cause then you didn't have to worry about, you know, getting nickel and dime to call up with a little question, it was kind of in that fourteen thousand dollar retainer. So I don't know what happened to that.
And, and that came up, I, I believe at a previous meeting.
Yes, it did, yeah.
And it's definitely something we should investigate, consider, get, and get that maybe as part of the RFP, what type of arrangement can you provide that might cause us to save some money, or, or to have an arrangement that,
Mm-hmm.
that better fits a smaller town like ours.
Sure.
I think Ed brought that up, Ed Blanchard, as I recall, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to tell. But I would like to do, um, one year, you know, I s- just to have some stability for m- for myself and the staff.
Yeah.
Sure.
Sure. Sounds good, so any motion from us?
I make a motion to approve the uh town council services contract as presented.
I second the motion.
Discussion, on my favor?
Yes.
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 Okay, now we've got some warrants for the state primaries.
So, um, in this particular arena, definitely wanna defer to Joyce, she was here, but I believe she's working, so if we could continue on and then stop when she comes back.
Sounds good. And we've got the department goals, presentation.
So plugging the, the website, so this is under the town administrator's homepage, um, all of these reports that, and presentations we give to are under, reports and information. So that people can see them. Okay, so. Uh, why did I ask the departments to set, to set goals? I know, uh, people know what goals are, but specifically asked the staff the following. We wanted to create uh a unity of effort with our goals, uh, I found, and this will be part of my entry plan that I, I promised and, and will give to you, that there was great effort in each department, but not a lot of, of unity, which you can certainly expect in a, in a, in an interim type situation like we had been expecting, so. Want to create everybody to be on the same page, everybody to understand what everybody else is doing. Also wanted to empower the department staff to accomplish the things that they wanted to accomplish, and then hold them accountable for the things that they said they were gonna do, so that is the point of our goal exercise.
Including yourself.
Yes, I have lots of them, I'll show you all of them. The uh structure of the goals, what I asked uh each department to do is come up with a professional development goal for themselves or their staff, something that met our overall strategic vision, and something that improved their department, or what I was calling a free goal, anything you wanna come up with. So our overall strategic vision is, is we talked about as a staff, is to uh increase and demonstrate competency in order to increase public trust. And this is a, a visual we did some training on. So confidence is not that we're incompetent, I didn't want that to come across, but the idea that we are, are professionals, that that is um shown publicly through our innovation and our accountability. Uh, this type of demonstrated confidence will, in my opinion, lead to an increase in public trust, an increase in public trust leads to um budget success or uh support for long-term goals, these big projects we're doing that require the, the town to trust us, that we're doing what we're supposed to do. So we wanna increase our professionalism, communication, demonstrate a strong fiscal responsibility, and then document everything with strong policy and procedure. This vision is, is what I've asked each department to embrace, and so far, so good. The goals had to fit into SMART goals, this is a very common acronym for goals, you want them to be specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-bound, so asked each department to adhere to that. So I'm not gonna read every single goal in, in this particular presentation, but I do wanna highlight a couple from each department, so. In terms of my goals, uh, I did, my goals for this particular presentation, and in the same vein as, as the staff was asked to do, my department goal is to increase public transparency and communication, that was through the website, through these uh reports, through these presentations, and then putting everything on social media, putting everything, all of our contracts online, so that, that the town can review them, see them, and know that we're following what we say. Town clerk is doing a, a lot of mentorship, she's had a little turnover in her assistant town clerk position, so when Joyce is here, everything runs great, and when Joyce isn't here, we have some questions, so. I thought it fitting that uh she is working with the new assistant town clerk to add a mentoring class, and is also training um at least five department tasks for the assistant town clerk, so they can take, take the reins when, and this is Kelly Parker, is the assistant, take the reins when Joyce isn't there. In terms of assessing, the assessing department is committed to increasing communication with the public, they wanna hold uh workshops, abatement workshops, especially with our senior community, our veteran community, uh, to try and support my outreach goals, uh, teach people what they need to do in order to do uh their abatements, that helps the residents by lowering costs, but also helps the department by increasing efficiency, that people know uh what they need to do. Jared in our veteran services department, he's committed to, to an outreach goal, visiting veterans, uh, where they live and where they, I don't wanna say play, but they go, to uh reduce some of the stigma that can be associated with getting help, making sure that uh those veterans who aren't willing to come to town, the town offices still get the services that they deserve. Claudia in the council on aging, uh, her department goal is to continue, and I don't, I don't know if everybody's seen it, but I encourage them to, to renovate the senior center over here to create a warm and welcoming space. Uh, they've renovated the bathroom, added a, a coffee bar, changed the space so that it's more open, um, less stuff everywhere, and it seems to be being well-received by our senior community, and, and I see even more and more people uh coming to the, the senior center. Travis, for those who know Travis, he has a lot of goals, uh, and it's an impressive amount of goals. And one of the things he wants to do that I think is worth highlighting is increased cross-training in his department, so, uh, it, there's a lot of equipment and a lot of specialties that are required in, in doing everything the Department of Public Works does, and he's creating teams and then turning those teams over so that each person gets uh training in the equipment. That'll allow us to provide these services for a long time, help with retention, and of course, make things interesting for employees, they're not doing the same thing every day. Uh, I thought that was a very strong management approach.
We, we saw that evidenced in Craig.
Yeah. Yeah, he's um one of the best examples of that. The police department, uh, Chief Perrin wants to send, and has already scheduled one of his sergeants to the FBI leader, uh, executive police training, this is a, a pretty significant training, Chief Perrin's actually considered going himself. This adds uh a higher level of knowledge to the, to the department, and especially in the leadership positions. And he also set a very ambitious goal to, to rewrite, review, and reissue thirty policies in the next year, he feels it's time, it's been a few years since the policies have been looked at, and he wants to address them. In the health department.
Uh, we, oh, sorry, just back to the police department, D U W, a few years ago, we used to have monthly reports, did you know that?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if that, that'd come up in any of your discussions with the, the expectations that you have for some of those departments.
So Travis continues to do his bi-weekly log, which is the best way for residents, and we're trying to push them on social media, it's the best way for residents to see day-to-day what the Department of Public Works do, cause it, some people don't know all the things that they accomplish in the day, and it literally goes task by task. But for the other departments, I've asked that they commit to our all-department report, which is the highlights from the last year, um, I'm not requiring that they do too, so we're gonna try and see if the all-department report is enough. Kelly in the health department, she wants to become a subject matter X, and this is amazing to me, a subject matter expert on septic installation procedures, which is not easy. Uh, but she wants to provide that community information upfront, and to help track uh the people who do these, this work for us, these inspections for us, I think that's great for, for an assistant to take on. She's also very heavily committed to documenting policies and procedures, we've had a lot of turnover in this department, and she wants to make sure that the next person, uh, if there is another person, has a good place to start and some continuity in the office. So the, the library, Jane's goals in the library, in, in conjunction with the board of trustees, wants to develop and publish the library's strategic five-year plan. This is pretty exciting, I'd like to uh, to, to see this myself, and so people can see where the library's gonna go. Libraries have advanced, and advanced, and advanced, and advanced, and it's, it's good to see how they're trying to meet the, the demands and the requirements of, of changing society. Sandy in our collector treasurer's office, she is, uh, she already went to a class, is looking to obtain her certification for mass municipal treasurer, she's going to school in August, and she'll accomplish this goal. So that will be um a, a great boost for her. Some of the changes that the town approved in terms of the finance department has allowed her to free up some time and to continue to do this professional development to make her department even more efficient.
Do you know what that mass municipal treasurer uh certification does?
Uh, it's, it essentially certifies them as a treasurer collector, other than that, I, I don't know, I did promise to go to one day if it were.
I didn't know there was something. Okay.
So I'm gonna learn a little bit about uh treasury and collecting, uh, but it's, it's very similar to the town clerk certification that Joyce has, it's just that next level, uh, and allows her to, to demonstrate what she already has, which is professionalism. She's also working, um, in, in addition to me, on committing to our, our tax title and, and tax lien, sort of the backlog, and working through that, so that we can um continue to clean up some of our owed taxes, we'll have a report on that for you, our, our plan for the entire year very soon. The building department, Patty is committed to creating a welcome to Hubbardson guide, this will help us and our vision to streamline the processes, to make applications for, for everything be uh just a little bit more user-friendly, to include new businesses. In the fire department. In the fire department, uh Chief is committed to at least one fire ground management course. These are, the the good news about these is they're free. Uh, he wants to go to one of those to continue to increase his professionalism. And also down here in the bottom, hire that full-time firefighter and paramedic so we can expand our coverage hours from seven AM to ten PM. Right now, they go to six PM, uh we wanna do that six days a week. And then our last one, our accounting office. Uh, they they are committed to um, we're working on creating more efficient workflows and part of all of this paperless stuff we've been working on. So looking at entering things like um vendor and payroll warrants remotely, we've been working with some services that can do that pretty easily, pretty cheaply. Uh, and that would help us help manage our our workflows and, you know, less walking back and forth and handing people papers. So they're they're committed to helping us with that. So overall, those are our goals, tried to hit some highlights in each department. We'll be reviewing these quarterly uh in meetings with each department to make sure that they're on track. Uh, I don't think that they're overly ambitious, I think our staff is professional professional enough to hit all of them and then maybe even more.
Awesome. Okay, great, I mean, that's uh, there is, I think a good part about it is is there's some some consistency in each of them, right? So the certifications, I mean, it's sort of on purpose, but it's easier if if there's almost like a format that everyone's sort of following at the same time, so for review purposes as well, you know?
And it matches, so competence to us, that strategic vision means individual competence, department competence, and then how that feeds into town competence. So they all kind of match that central theme.
Okay. Alright, so.
So your report? Uh, more talking for me. So having, just to start this report, having tortured my departments with the goals that we've committed to, I've come up with my own, and these are for you to um comment on and review and approve so that uh it can help me create my priorities of work in the coming year. So they are, they, I did send them to you uh in the email, here they are, they're broken into five categories, community outreach, our department goals, human resources, budget, finance, and infrastructure. Just to highlight a couple for for those watching or those who are here. Want to work on economic development with our new economic development coordinator, which we should be able to announce soon. Plus, the uh the planning board, continue to grow our social media presence and then create an online portal for reporting issues so that we're getting more feedback directly from the community. And the departments, wanna identify IT upgrades, continue to modernize town operations, continue to review and strengthen our budgeting process and commit to quarterly meetings financially and with department heads. Human resources, um this needs some strong coordination, and Lori and I together are working through everything we need to do here to include just uh creating packets and online portals that allows uh employees to understand all of these processes and just make them more efficient. Also gonna continue to address wage and employment parity issues and hiring processes and recruitment policies, I mean, sorry, retention policies. Budget and finance, uh update all and publish all of our financial policies and then develop these long-term strategies that that I've been talking about, that we've been working on to include incorporating all of our budget processes into a final financial forecast, to include our capital um plan that we started last week, and then monitoring and tracking so that there's some good public transparency. So this is quarterly financial reports and making sure that I'm meeting and watching uh weekly, bi-weekly, and monthly in terms of what we're spending, what we're doing, so we don't have messy end-of-year procedures, and there's some stability. And lastly, if infrastructures heavily tied around the five-year capital plan, um road maintenance being a primary focus of of residents and and us as a staff and as volunteer boards, and um we really need a long-term information technology plan because that's where everybody's going, and we need to make sure that we're leading there. So what I'm looking for is um comments, not necessarily here, but after we view them, to approve this plan so that I can have my marching orders.
Okay, I mean, a couple things that that um, and I I don't really know how to integrate it in necessarily, but we always say it, it's such a big percentage of of our budget is schools, right? And what what's your relationship with our schools? Um, uh, you know, we've got very, very new turnover, it's the first time in a long time-ish turnover, I'd say, superintendent-wise-ish. Um, and and making sure we're, our relationship is strong there, so that can only help out when um communications inevitably um are necessary when the assessments are changing and the ratios, all that su- stuff they talk about all the time, I think that's a something to consider, how to work it in. And then one one other one was um was, and maybe I just glossed over it, but was there sort of a business development or economic development piece to this, would you say? As far as, and and I I don't know exactly what that means, but still, just those are sort of some of the the hot-button things that we have that aren't necessarily sort of um sort of rig- rigid financial policies or whatever else, they're just more sort of overall policies for our region and and for our town.
Yes, I can incorporate that, and my thinking around that is is mostly, there's a lot of people doing a lot of great things in terms of economic development, and and perhaps my role is coordinating all of that into one unity of effort, uh might be a good goal for the year, but I'll get you.
Or delegating that.
Yeah.
Actually, Ryan, since you mentioned schools, it's not really a goal, but while I'm thinking of it, um it'd be nice, since we have a new superintendent, if maybe we can invite her to one of our meetings in the fall, um just to kind of introduce ourselves and and uh have a little discussion.
That's easy.
About whatever it feels like.
Yeah.
No agenda.
Sure she loved it.
Yeah, no no agenda, just.
Great, uh moving on.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, something everyone loves to talk about is uh evaluation, so um my six-month, my my probation period is coming to an end, believe it or not. Been here almost six months. I sent you several versions of a of an evaluation. There is nothing in my contract or in our bylaws or anything that says how this six-month eval- or probation evaluation goes for town administrators, so uh just looking to start that discussion, and I, of course, I can help you with artifacts or design, uh just looking to see how that goes. Really, all that's in right now is whether or not uh expectations have been met and obviously formalizing and documenting that. So that is up to the board, but just reminding a little of the timeframe and.
Yeah, so the last time, when's the last time we did one, Anita?
Yep, yes.
The the Rand we do, I don't remember.
No, no.
But the form that you, one of the form, it may have been the second form that you had, I believe was the one we had used before, which is pretty simple overall. Um, with with each, you know, numbering system or whatnot coming to to an average, and I I think all of us doing that individually. Um, and then discussing it in public forum, uh that sounds like the process we should go.
Okay, I would just ask that I got a chance to see it.
Of course.
Comment first.
Sure.
I don't know if that's individually, I don't know what you want for a process, but.
So we have till August twentieth to cut you loose?
Yes. Having spent time in the military, I'm here to serve or not.
Or not.
You're doing a great job, Ryan, so. So maybe maybe we'll do this as far as timeframe, six months is August twentieth, and summer's always tough with with everything. Why don't we um um kind of do a dance, get that together, we can all do an evaluation um separately, uh figure out a process to kind of come together with with that, and maybe sometime in September? You know?
Is that form still available that we used? Uh, he emailed it to us.
Mm.
So i- i- we'll have that, I'll, after the meeting, I'll f- go through it and say which one I think is the right form, and I'll get that to you. And then if, is that, that's alright with you guys, and then you can redistribute it out to all of us. We'll fill it out individually, we'll get it back to you directly without copying anybody else, and then you can decide, I think, whether or not you wanna contact anybody to discuss. Or somebody can say, hey, I wanna go over this with you, alright, so individually, we'll all have that option, and then you can have that option back at us.
And then you would consolidate them, or they're just, that would be the review?
I think that would be the review, I think then you've got a sort of a number, um.
No, 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 we took that and then we averaged out the numbers.
But I, that's not what I meant, you can do that, but I guess I'm, everyone's gonna, underneath every box is a, underneath every place where you give a number is a a box to write stuff in too.
Right.
So that's why, I don't know how you consolidate all it necessarily, I guess we can say we can consolidate and average the number out, because you're gonna need that for, based on a payment threshold, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I I would say we, I'm trying to remember back, I think we averaged out the number.
Okay.
Between everybody, so if, you know.
Yes, we did, yeah.
We we averaged it out, and then um we can just consolidate comments onto, if we have any comments.
Sure.
And and into the thing, you even saying Jeff said this, you know, Jamie said this, Dan said this.
Sure, okay.
This is very similar to the annual evaluation, that's very explicitly laid out in my contract.
Okay.
But this this is also a probationary one, so I I was just discussing with you whether or not you wanted to modify it or.
I don't think so, I I think, you know, it's it's.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yes, and it's a, it's important one, so.
Let me do that, and then we can discuss it in open session, uh sometime in September, we'll pick a meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Uh, employee vacancies, we're still looking for, uh we have not had any applications for either our planning board assistant or our firefighter, paramedic position. I talked to Chief Hayes about this, it's still open till August one, he has a plan, um he's hoping to get someone, so there's no there's no plan yet in place, but what he would do if no one applied, and all the towns around us are also looking for this type of employee, so he's not surprised. So I just wanted to relay that information to you, um.
Could I ask of the planning, would have, have you had any people speak to you about that?
I I'd go through Ryan, no, no one's asked me about it.
Yeah. When you uh requested this, did you have anybody in mind, or did, were, had people expressed any interest that, we may, might go after again?
Um. That would be a question for Ben, and he's no longer there, so.
Mm-huh.
So he was the one that was handling that.
Okay.
So if we're gonna c- continue to push that, um that one we do need to hire, so we're gonna find a way, but it is vacant right now. Uh, professional development grant, so I was fortunate enough, I applied for the Nancy Golouski Leadership Fund Grant for Professional Development. They agreed, they're gonna pay for two of my MC PPO classes, it was a twelve hundred dollar grant. I got to meet some of my peers last week. In turn, because I have this professional development money, I've offered um a a similar amount to my staff in order to meet the goals that I had them do for professional development, so redistributing that money so that we can help the staff. Several people have already taken me up on it, and I appreciate that that um that commitment, so we're gonna keep doing that. Uh, volunteer vacancies, gonna keep pushing that at every meeting, looking for people to help us serve in these boards. Capital plan update, uh we met last week with UMass to begin creating a new five-year capital plan. This comprehensive document's gonna look at buildings, infrastructure, department needs, consolidating all the old reports, which was a critical component of of, or on my wish list, making sure we don't reinvent the wheel, a lot of good work has been done, and just kind of consolidating those plans into one. Uh, the threshold is those items that are five thousand dollars or more with a five-year life expectancy. The departments are sup- supposed to be getting their requests in by uh August first, and the goal for this document is some drafts in November, December, and a final document sometime in January. So that'll be right in line with our um can, our initial budget discussions, we can place it in the context.
No, I was gonna say, just to give, uh so the the town center committee is one of these departments, and Alicia Muck, uh who's on the committee, went to uh last Thursday or something, whatever it was. She went to this meeting and s- no, it wasn't last Thursday, whatever it was, uh she went to it, sort of reported back, um talked about the August first deadline, talked about the forms you have to fill out and all the information, so we had a town center committee meeting last Thursday and went over all of the projects that we see over the next, you know, five years, that would be over this five thousand dollar threshold, that would be worth sort of filling out this information on and getting to the college center, so that's just something we've got, a few more weeks to sort of develop and and get to the. But but how many departments, there's twenty departments, we're gonna do stuff like that?
Yes, it's gonna be a lot, but um we'll know where we're at and and what we need to do.
Yeah.
Um, in the, one of the comments I just want to address that I got from the staff is, you know, they've done these before, so what I'm really trying to develop this is is a commitment to this document, a commitment to this process, and then staffing a um a the a the committee appointed by the selectmen that will review this annually and keep it going, you know, that way staff doesn't have to keep reinventing the wheel. Uh, strap grant, so Travis and I worked together uh to complete Mass Work Strap Grant, as we've discussed many times. This is seeking state funds to improve Flag, Hill Street Extension, Williamsville, and Mount Jefferson. So up here is a, this is a visual of sort of what it entails, uh 'cause it's with highlighter and an old map, so if if your house is there, like, it's not necessarily to scale, but just wanted to show um what we're looking at. So the strap grant is supposed to help with economic development and small towns' public safety, so uh public safety meaning the safety of our roads, and then we tied it to our use of recreational land up there by the state forest in those areas to try and uh leverage those state funds. We think it's really important, and as soon as the application's in, we're going to um communicate this to the state as well, that this is a, this is a big deal. This um will help us fund the other projects in our road maintenance plan, and it is very important for Hubbardson to uh to get this grant.
So Travis did a a a cost estimate based on what the surface treatments are gonna be for this work, and went out there, looked at trees or whatever else he had to do to come up with the distances that we thought we could be able to pave, and we do.
And um, you know, he's conservative, he did conservative estimates, and then also took pictures to show just the the area and is how much is necessary and what is needed up there.
So we tacked on some more last time, because the pricing came in better, so we were able to extend the r- road a few different directions, a few different ways. So, you know, that's something, I'm sure he's already thinking about that, keeping in mind that if if we're able to, you know, get the full amount of the grant and then you get your bids in, and it's less based on the scope that you've given, you can uh you can in- increase your footprint.
He called several of his peers in order to understand that process and and has also articulated that to me.
And and Tim, if you're, I don't know if you, you guys probably, I'm sure you remember, but Tim peeled away pieces of the previous contract, like erosion control installation stuff that we could self-perform as a town versus having a contractor paying prevailing wages to install, sort of pulled that away, and that allowed additional funds to be able to do additional sort of roadway work for work that we could self-perform. So that's a, another way to to help squeeze every penny out of it.
We need this one, so.
Yeah.
And are are, we are leveraging in the in the grant, the campground?
Yes.
I hope that.
So we're connecting to an important business in the community.
Are we going to, um, would it help to to ha- get a vote of confidence from our our legislators?
Yes.
Okay.
We just ask them to.
I would even invite them, tell them how important this is.
Yeah.
To honor them, mhm.
Yeah.
It's just, and it's, every community is competing for funds, and uh this one is really important to the town of Hubbardson, and we just wanna articulate that as much as possible to the state.
Okay.
The the next thing in my report, this Swift nine eleven, uh we talked about that a lot with the director, so I won't go over it more, but we are strongly encouraging residents to sign up, this is an important communication tool for the community and for our public safety. And then employee recognition is the last piece. I'd like to acknowledge our DPW, um they've been leveraging minimal funds this year to try and improve the roads. This past month, crews have focused on Mount Jefferson, Flag, and Old Colony, smoothing those areas out. Received a lot of uh positive comments, and and there are some negative comments as well, as people that are like, I want my road to look like that too, and we're trying. Uh, a lot of the millings were repurposed from from the Route sixty-two project and added drainage and leveling the surfaces, and all of this, in Travis's words, is to to stall until we can get to the Chapter ninety money or the Mass Work Grant or um some of the other things, so just trying to to keep residents uh safe and happy until we can create the permanent solution. So these improvements have um helped our residents and also allow us to plow the roads, which is commonly forgotten in this, that it's it's difficult and it takes more time to plow a crappy road, so uh they're trying to create these surfaces so that it can be more efficient for our winter operations. So I went up there myself and and reviewed this, talked with our employees, I mean, they work like crazy up there. This is super impressive, what they can do.
Up where? Up on Mount Jeff?
Uh, yeah, up in the Mount Jeff area.
Haven't been there in a while, but.
Um, so I just wanted to call attention and thank them for that.
Right, I had a just a question if I could on the Old Colony, 'cause I happen to travel that road, I'll tw- on average twice a day. Um, and it makes a incredible difference what they've done, but there seems to be a section right in the middle that they didn't touch, and I was just curious why.
And Travis told me that, and I'm forgetting what he said right now.
Oh, oh.
But I encourage you to call him, 'cause he likes to talk about it.
So he's aware of it too, that was left undone, okay.
I I uh drove over that way tonight just to see how it's held up, because it's been quite a while, and it was in great shape. That's probably because that section didn't need it.
Or maybe there's a boulder there or something.
I would, I do, I would disagree if that's the case, but uh.
There was just like a maybe, I don't know, a hundred-foot section that was just was left alone, and probably because the surface was.
Ryan, do you know when any of the work's gonna get done over in Adams and New Westminster?
I don't, we don't have an exact date, but Travis keeps telling me soon, it's gonna happen.
So it is, it is still gonna be this construction season?
Yeah, 'cause I know that they did that call, bro.
Oh, never mind.
And, 'cause I, Ryan, that was for sixty, the millings were from sixty-eight.
It's just the base layer, they let the base layer compact, and then they'll put the finished one.
And then they'll go, come back over it again. Big difference with the sidewalks.
I actually stared at that number for like ten minutes.
Actually, yeah, yeah. Actually got it, yeah, so ask for an update from Travis, hi Dan, next few weeks they will be replacing all the guardrail on sixty-eight South. Finish cleaning and fixing drains toward the end of the month into early August, they will pave, add millings under the guardrails and paint the lines, uh so that's the update. It's coming. Okay, uh space utilization discussion, we're talking again.
This is you guys, sorry, so this is a um very evident in the discussions on the capital plan about space. So we have space problems here in town, we can't fit another employee without a revolt. Um the senior center is is the seniors have expressed a desire that that they want to continue to look at possible solutions to to their space issues. The the police identified, and I'll I'll let them speak for themselves, but they spoke in length with the capital plan about meeting regulation and and needing more space. The library has has come to me with with talks of maybe proposing a renovation, uh and the fire is currently renting um for twenty-one thousand dollars a year. So these are not new to you, I'm just sort of framing the discussion. I don't want to spend the staff's time on something that we don't wanna do, so I'm looking for guidance as to what should what should I do in order to help facilitate the next step in our space issues.
Yeah, wants the wrong word, right, I mean it's not like we don't want to do, right?
Sure, I'm sorry, yeah, but.
So it's it's more like um what the what the p- the people wanna do, so um I mean.
It 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 might be time to think about the fire police station. Um I know that that and I know the whole thing with the senior center and and everything, um but the one common thing that I remember seeing through all of that was number one on the the survey the planning board put out, um if I remember correctly, there was overwhelming support for a public safety building.
Yes.
But fairly low support for a senior center, um and a lot of what I remember hearing through the discussions with the senior center and everything is I'm not gonna vote for the senior center, but if you guys wanna build a fire station, I'm all for you, so I wonder, I mean, as a longer-term solution, if the appetite in town may be for a public safety building on that land right now and can we incorporate in that public safety building some community rooms or something else that can also work as a senior center?
Because the land was specifically given to us, because part of the senior center, as was a half a million dollars, you know.
Right, um.
And and let me just jump. And let me jump in, so you know, the the that was brought up by many people during when it was gonna be a senior center, why they were separate, right? Because, oh, you know, you you the what if the they have to be uh go up, they go out on a call and there are seniors there, is that gonna be dangerous? I think all those excuses have gone, right, you know, it just to get some space is gonna be important, I I'm not gonna speak for Claudia or any of them, but I I would assume that they'll be more receptive to to something like that, um you know, as you go.
I mean, I I unfortunately, you know, with the with cash traps towns and small towns, having a single-use building is is impossible, so I don't know, it I that might be a goal, that's a goal of mine at least this year, is to maybe start the conversation on a fire police
Yeah.
that would open up space in here, I mean, and can we add on, can we have with that building somehow a uh some rooms or whatever, or if we get police out of here, does that all just become senior center?
Yeah. Right, so so the process would be to get design money first, so we have a schematic design, um we I was, uh uh what's that?
Several, I think.
No, we we have a main schemat- I was on the building committee and that building committee started not just as a senior center building committee, it was senior center building committee, public safety building committee, we had representatives from from police and fire on there, um and uh the the town had authorized, I think it was fifty thousand dollars for a a more than schematic design, really detailed design for, which is somewhere wherever you've moved the files, um uh uh put away somewhere and um what what we would have to do, and there was cost estimates that were put on that as well, um what the next process would be is that we we would have to um request design money for it, you know, we got it, we got it um granted to us for the design of the senior center, which was, I think, the design fee itself was over three hundred thousand dollars, so that was a small building, this is at least a rough square footage is three to four times bigger for public safety, based on what what the ones we had seen and what you need as far if you're gonna do this and just there I was part of a million discussions, right, we vetted everything, right, uh with with what requirements there are, when you're gonna build a new one and and all that sort of stuff, so it would be a a big design ask, and then I guess the the question is, is with that design ask, and and I'm for it, I just wanna say that, but with that design ask, which is gonna be a big number north of half a million bucks, are we wasting that? I I don't wanna say it like that, cause it's not, but are we expend expending that money, doing all that work, doing that design with something that at ten million dollars is unlikely to go?
Mm.
So that's the discussion, and as we're just starting now, so I'm I'm, you know, nothing's being decided here, but that's the and those are the numbers, they were, you know, this was a couple of years ago now when we first did it and they were six, seven million bucks and and the the construction is booming. So, so.
I mean, there is also some discussion in the school, you know, how much, do they have space in the school that's gonna be avail- a little bit of space, we're not talking about half the school, I mean, like a couple of classrooms that can be town offices or something like that, um I mean, that was a discussion last, two years ago, last year.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
You know, so I don't know if that's gone anywhere, what they've thought, I mean, they're still renting the caps, which is great, um you know, there's not a whole lot of extra room in the school, they've confirmed that with us, but.
I met with them about it too, and they're like, everyone's met with us, so it's your turn, but.
Yeah.
Was it the same as when we met with them, you know, is is there anything available or? My worry with it is it's a patch. There's, I mean, there's no good solution and and there's finite resources and it's just maybe there's only one chance of this and and what is the appetite to to do it all?
Well, okay, so you what what do you think, I mean, you're you're sort of, we've heard this, we've had this discussion, you're new to this discussion, your turn.
I am very new.
No, I so what, I mean, you you live in it, so I mean, what do you what do you think and factoring in, you know, what you've heard about the town of Hubbardson, so what do you think?
I don't, I don't wanna speak for a resident, but I I know there's little appetite for, I wanna do this and then getting asked to do this and then getting asked to do this, so if there's one unified plan, even if it's long-term, that incorporates everything, I feel like there would be, if there's gonna be support, which you never know, then there would be more support for that, but the it's more than just, um it the the town, the town offices need solutions as well, these are not, this was never designed to be uh town offices, we can barely fit what we have, um and then public safety, the seniors and the library too, which is also included in these discussions, so if you do all of these things and then the library comes and asks for two to four million dollars to renovate their space, which they also need, then then what? So my opinion is we look at it, know the number, know everything, and then decide. But that's also a big ask, I understand that.
Well, yeah, no, then you just, you gotta you gotta spend some money to to get to know that number correctly too, appropriately, um to talk to the people who do that work, to understand what the total total ask is gonna be, I guess, um but I I guess, yeah, I don't know, I mean, you said it, uh as far as is it time?
There's no, there's no good solutions, but the town needs some solution, because, you know, and
The needs aren't gonna go away, that's for sure, they're gonna only get worse.
The needs aren't gonna go away and, you know, the the physical plant that we have that we're, we have police and town offices, the seniors, the library, I I mean, it's we need something else um to take us into the future, because right now it is, it's a bunch of band-aids, this building was meant to last ten years or it's a temporary building in nineteen seventy and here we are two thousand twenty almost, um I mean, it's still holding up and like it's we shouldn't knock it down, but we we need something to move us forward. And I don't know what that something is, but, you know, we do need more space that's better suited for modern modern life that than we have, in the library basement and and, you know, I want the library to be a library, I want the library to be able to get grants, we gotta get people out, where we gonna put them?
Right.
They can't go here, you know, the.
Right. And unfortunately, funding sources, one sec, that's one, uh unfortunately, so funding sources are um are us.
Yeah, you know, we were renting space, our old fire department, which was, you know, circa nineteen sixty, has fallen apart, I mean, they're doing a good job patching it together, but doesn't fit fire trucks, modern fire trucks anymore, it doesn't fit apparatus anymore, they barely have room to put their gear in there, so I don't know, I mean, we we need some kind of space overall, but.
I I I think the point that you brought is a very important one and it is understanding what the tolerance is for the town and the individual members who live in this town in terms of how much they can and are willing to spend. I mean, if you're living in this town and you want to continue living and you wanna have those services, which everybody wants, they also need to pay for that, and the question will be is is what is their tolerance? And finding that, I think, is really key and instrumental, I mean, your tolerance might be very different from Jeff's tolerance, as an example. But at the end, we need to understand what overall at the town, if is it gonna be an extra million dollars that we can get, and then with the public library, they indicated very clearly, this is what we need, this is how much it's gonna cost, this is how much time it's gonna take us to bring this back into in into the coffers and by then we will have a a a a new roof. And I think in a similar fashion, the town has to look at, is it's Plan A for the fire department, and Plan B for the police department, and Plan C for uh the council on the, or not the council, the senior center. Uh and and you can add to that and figure out what your prioritizations are, and second, this is what the what the tolerances are. I mean, I think we've done that, but I think it oftentimes it's gone immediately to a very large number and people shy away from that. And so projecting it over the long term is what we need to, I think, as a town, really start collectively think about. And understanding out of that, what can we do, we need to take into consideration, yes, we do have an aging population, which may be, say for example, population has a very limited income, fixed income, what I'm saying, and any kind of an increase is gonna have a significant impact on it.
Absolutely.
Uh but we also have parents who have children here and they want to have the community basically uh prosper and so forth. So we need to find a a a balance on this here and and come up with some some solution, but I think very important, I think uh uh Dan, you 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 hit the nail on the head. Understanding what that tolerance is and how much we are willing as a town to uh to to spend on this here is is key.
So there's another piece to this, um we we talked about the town center committee, we 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 have o- over three years now as a town center committee and and I I know I've said it a bunch of times, but they're just also motivated into it, um over the next three years, starting now, this is gonna look very different around here, you know, the town center with the south sixty-eight, with the north sixty-eight, with the town center reconstruction, the shared use corridors, uh all that sort of stuff, um is may start to change the the yeah, and 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 attitude.
And perception.
And perception and, you know, it it in, but you can't wait for that all to happen and then do it, you gotta kinda do something in parallel so that things, you know, stay continuous. It's not like you finish your your project and then you start the design of the other, that's not the way to do things, right, you wanna be doing things so you've 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 got uh the ability to just sort of continue on with it, using that um uh momentum that you've gained from performing the work leading up to it, so I don't know, it's just a, we we've talked about it too, and and MassDOT has has uh, you know, as they've uh joined us in in our efforts towards this full trunk corridor reconstruction, have sort of insisted that we uh install like this this shared youth uh use um sidewalk all the way up to where we would cross the street to go to the senior center slash public safety building, that's like uh important to them. You know, even we've told them, oh, you know, we tr- you that told them the whole story and that that's, it's important to them, so I don't know, I I don't know what I don't know what the answer is to what the right time is to s- do that. Anyway, I think we can.
So I'm looking for, do you want me to gather everything to to have another discussion, do you want me to reach out to the people to start things, or do you want me to hold off, is is really what I'm asking.
On what, you talking about everything?
I just, I wanted to devote my time to to something that is, I'm getting, uh I have a lot of files in there that that talk about this type of stuff and a lot of complaints from um not complaints, but concerns and and legitimate space issues, like we're adding an employee here that we that we can't really fit. Um so it it wouldn't, it would be irresponsible of me to not say, sh- should I do something about this or should should I make it work, cause I'll do either.
See, unfortunately, there there would be a a pretty large contention, uh I think, that would say, so we're gonna hire one more empor- one more employee and build a ten million dollar police station? You know, and it's crazy, but this it's um I the million, the only effective way to
Is there any way to like poll, poll the people to to see how this stuff can be to a a bunch of?
I was trying to get to that. But I think the people who respond are receptive, the ones who don't.
Well, but it's gonna, well, that's exactly.
Well, I mean, the the planning board had a very good study, a very good uh survey.
So did the town center committee.
Yeah, and and I think if you go back and look at that, I mean, I read right, I reread that actually sometime in the spring, this past spring, um and there's a lot of good stuff in that survey and a lot of people responded, so um you know what might be worthwhile is to if we can maybe everyone, I mean, it's on, I don't print it out, it's online, but if everyone, I think, just spends ten minutes and just goes through that survey again, there's over a thousand responses on that survey and there's positives and negatives, but there's a lot of stuff that was collated about kind of what residents wanna see, what they wanna do, there's pages and pages of comments that people put in, so um I would just suggest everybody go back, reread that a little bit, let chew that around a little, a little bit, some of the things from that, and then we can have a discussion for the next couple of months, kinda based on that.
May I make a suggestion, I think, you know, if you want to have an active plan, one of the first things to do is is how about filtering that into categories? I mean, you have a thousand responses, I think a lot of people get overwhelmed potentially with a thousand responses, and just even bucketing and 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 filtering it in such a way that people can say, look, ten percent of the population, if you have other answers.
Oh, it it was, it was, no, 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 there there wasn't a thousand questions, there was a thousand, there was a
It's filtered, it's fully filtered. Yeah, yeah.
As I'm sorry, not question, answers, that's what I meant.
Yeah. Yeah, no, a thousand people responded and it was bucketed into what percentage want um to see a, you know, a a new store, a new this or what that.
But do we, do we remember this year, and can we put this, say, for example, in a PowerPoint presentation, just refresh people's memories, I think it would be a a valid exercise.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, even for yourselves, not having to read those a thousand responses back and.
I know, it's 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 it's
It's in a report.
Yeah, it's in a report, it's 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 a ten, it probably takes ten minutes, the longest thing it takes to read is probably the the seventy-five or eighty written res- written comments that people made, otherwise it's just, you know.
No, I did, I did that myself, and I thought that that's where you were going to to read every single detail of of the response.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, it's it's otherwise, you know, there's a question, uh you know, what is your, what is the biggest thing that concerns you about Hubbardson and there's like ten choices and it gives a percentage of each.
Sure. Yeah.
But it's it's it, I think it would be a good exercise to go back and look through that again.
I mean, and have you thought about just creating an open forum again where this can be discussed with the with the population, I mean, a lot of people look at the at this year, but they don't necessarily always have the opportunity to participate in this year, and I don't know, if you have, say, for example, a a a an open meeting again where you can just bring that up during a discussion session and have folks basically verbalize it and and maybe absorb it at that point in time. And I'm trying to think out of the box, guys, I mean, they, otherwise six months from now, we're gonna be discussing the same.
Yeah.
Oh, trust me, I'm with you, and I'm almost. Well, I'm j- you you're just about to get appointed to be the head of that, just so you know, so, um no, but meaning.
With Ryan's help, by the way.
No, no, I I mean the s- senior center slash public safety building uh commi- okay.
I understand.
So, th- those Town hall, sorry, town hall, library.
Those surveys are pretty easy, like to throw up right now on like the town of Hubbardson Facebook page, I could throw that up, so the four categories are police station, fire station,
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
town office, and senior center. Which one, pick?
Yeah.
And just one week, see what, see what they say.
I think.
But yeah.
But I I hate to, I agree, I agree, but I but I hate, yeah.
Because, well, Mike, can I say something, I know before they said, if you do one building, then they're gonna say no to the rest, but it's either we have nothing or do we get one?
Yeah, but in in this, I don't, I hate to to s- to survey people to death, because in the planning board survey, it broke it out with town hall, police, you know, public safety, senior center.
Okay, we can go right now.
I mean, it was all a bunch of different things, so.
It was a five things, I think.
Yeah, there was
One of the things I would comment, I would make, Dan, is uh you might wanna look, have Ryan look at doing, if we build a fire station, that will free up this building for this, or if we build the senior center, it'll free up the building to do that. Or if we build a new fire station, we have that other building that we can renovate it or do a building there, so you maybe the alter- you know, if we build this one, if we build one building, whichever one it is, have what the other uses it gonna be, instead of just saying, we're gonna just build this building and then like, say, okay, we're gonna build a new fire station that'll free up that fire station, maybe for a senior center, it'll free up this building, we can expand the offices, the for the town offices. And maybe get empty out the, like, think think of it in that way, instead of just saying, um, we're gonna build this building and that's it. No, it's to build the building and I think this way, you're getting at, where do we go from there? If we build this building, then we're gonna reuse these other buildings in this particular way, so.
Well, that that was actually presented, if I remember right, at one of the first presentations of the senior center, um it was up as, and I agree a hundred percent and that's the way we should go moving forward,
Yeah.
but I remember it being like phase one, phase two, and phase three, like phase one was construction of the senior center.
Yep.
Phase two was after the senior center was constructed, then it freed up this space and then the offices from the library moved into here.
Right.
And then phase three was construction of a public safety building, which would then open this up and so there was planning for that at the time.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it was reiterated well as the two years went on.
And it just so happened that the order of that wasn't necessarily what people wanted, it, we had to do that order. It we had to do that order because we had this grant and we wanted to try to do it and form this committee and all that.
Right.
But that from the survey results that we received afterwards didn't seem to be so.
No, the survey results showed that the order was probably public safety first and then.
But I think most people believe we need something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if I think if you if you did this the the study or the the report on each one, say if you build a fire station, this is what we need to do. If you build a new town office, this is what we'll do. And give them people, we all agree we need some things. What do you want? And I think that may be a way of getting people's idea.
But in this but in the same sense, the point I t- I made earlier, we can't lose sight of the fact that if we're talking about the land down there that was specifically given to us for a senior center, as was the half million dollars, you can't itemize these things and not always be saying it's gotta also have something to do with seniors because you're you be you can't do anything if you don't.
Sure.
If that land was there for a senior center.
After.
Yeah.
So we can't just put a fire station on it. It wouldn't be allowed.
As long as the footprint is always there.
So we can't w- I'm simply saying we can't lose sight of that point because they're gonna they're linked.
As long as you have home.
Yeah.
I remember when we first got started and all of this in the first committee on the buildings, I made the comment at a meeting, I said the senior center is a linchpin to this entire problem that we have in town. Because w- if we had that, then everything opens up. And the the linchpin was the senior center. And they you know they got the land, they got the money and we have to abide by that and we they have to always be included in these plans. We can't separate it.
I I work in the risk assessment area with banks and things like that. I believe you're a doctor.
Mm.
So I mean the same thing when you have say for example a patient. One of the first things we know is is that with limited resources and specifically like in the information security, you cannot plug every single hole. And one of the things that we typically do is is we prioritize what and we we prioritize our risks. And so I look at this here as not necessarily as a risk, but say for example as these are your biggest pain points. And so a question that I would ask is that instead of only going to the town folks and saying, hey, what is it that you want, which is a very valid thing to do? I think it's also important to show to the townspeople, this are the priorities that we have or that we see. And you know justify and provide them with the consequences of not addressing this here. And having such a list that you can then prioritize and assign a value to it allows you, at least when I look at it from a risk assessment perspective, to to have a very clear understanding. You know, this is number one, this is number two and this is number three, at least in the perception of a group. And it helps prioritize something. And I think that will like lead into something that Tom is saying and that is is that you may not be able to do a big bang approach here, but rather you may have to do this here incrementally. And now you can start saying, hey, and I'm just using the example that Tom brought up earlier and that is is if we started with the fire department, this is how we go about doing this and this is what would potentially follow. I mean there's a way of doing it and and that's just something that I would suggest maybe to to look into.
But we did that. We we did that.
And if we look at it from Ryan's perspective, with his help and with the feedback that he gets from the town uh you know, the town administrator and 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 being sort of like the the fulcrum where where a lot of that information comes in, I think it'd be a good point to say, hey, this is like number one, this is number two, number three. And 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 assess it from that perspective and bring that back and say, this is what I hear. And uh let's see if we can validate this here and then present it from that perspective. It's just a way of looking at it potentially.
Tom?
Um I think the survey you're mentioning uh was done around was issued. I think you authored or compiled the results and issued it around March seventeenth.
Mm-hmm.
And that is a good thing to look back on. But the reason that survey existed was it was supposed to feed the master plan. And the master plan is in its infancy. Um we don't have a master plan. We've been pecking at it. Uh I think if we focus on a master plan, something may emerge, should emerge from the master plan. Um there's also a building needs committee report. I don't know if they did a survey. I can't remember.
We did, two thousand twelve building needs, it was no survey.
Yep.
Alright, and then there is the main.
There was they they prioritized that that tho- those who did the study did based on the the need of the 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 old age of the structure, the the da 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 da.
Yeah. I think they hired a consultant to that that uh.
They did, yeah.
Was that two thousand twelve?
That's. Yeah.
It might be might have started in twelve. I think it was issued about.
What? I just didn't realize it was that long ago.
Oh, yeah.
I think it was issued about fifteen, sixteen.
No.
Well, I wonder.
Uh it doesn't matter.
And then there's the main speed committee that did a survey.
Yep.
And then there's the cultural council that just did a survey.
And the schools.
And the school.
And the library did a survey.
Right.
You like surveys.
We've 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 pretty much surveyed the people pretty good.
Surveyed.
Yeah, and we have I and I I still go back to that planning. I mean there's a lot of good responses on that one and yes, it does feed a master plan, but there's a lot of I think pertinent um answers to a lot of the questions that we bring up and discussions we have in that planning board survey.
Why don't we make a master plan? It's overdue. Last one was what, two thousand eighty eighty four or something?
Nineteen eighty. Eight nineteen eighty eight.
Eighty eight. Supposed to do it every ten years, I think.
It's interesting, the responses on the nineteen eighty uh survey and the two thousand seven sixteen survey are almost identical. Nothing had changed virtually.
Hmm.
That speaks volumes.
Alright, well we're gonna move along here. I I um I I you know, I'm I'm glad it's on here. I I don't I d- I'm I don't think we really gave you much direction yet, but I think now that we're maybe it's back on the front burner cause it went away for a little while after some some failures, that uh I don't know, we we should I don't know what the best way forward, cause just saying, hey, put it on another um meeting agenda, we're just gonna do this again.
We can review the results and then have more information and we can.
Yeah, I I would say I would say take everybody take some time to rev- review the results and maybe in an upcoming meeting in the next month or so, we put it back on and and we.
Sure.
Where are the results?
They were on the planning board page.
Maybe we post some outback too if doesn't have much.
I I think it would be helpful for me, maybe not for you, but to also to to have this public hearing where all interested parties come and talk or at least some super meeting where
Yeah.
they can come and discuss the library, the senior center, the we can, it would help me at least to frame the issue.
Well, a- and th- that was not the function necessarily of that survey and there's probably a lot of additional, there is a lot of additional information in that survey too. If we can get it to a point where it's in a position that people don't have to do much to find what we're talking about here would be would be beneficial.
Mm-hmm.
But I'd say everybody look through it, read it, digest it a little bit and then we can come back and maybe dis- discuss it, some ideas and then move forward
Maybe like.
from there with with maybe a more confirmed better plan.
Yeah, send out the link.
Mm-hmm.
And the point of bringing this on the agenda also was people are like, oh, it's really nice, what you doing, what are you gonna do about? And it's always a building. So I just wanna do my part to help answer that.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Why doesn't the town just uh buy some Powerball tickets? See what happens.
Nice.
Three hundred million, that goes a long way.
Oh, they just waste it. We just waste it. Okay, we have appointment, planning board associate member. Uh I don't know what format you wanna go on through here, but um I guess we'll start at the table here first. Um there have been uh a few um how many are there total that were recommended originally or that has had put in interest?
For the.
For this particular position.
Yeah, three, four. There's four, okay.
Three, four.
And then it turned into three, three, four, one.
Three, yep.
Three, four, one, and we received um a letter from Francois.
Mm-hmm.
And we know that the planning board had a vote the other night.
We we on the fifth July fifteenth interviewed everyone.
You interviewed everyone?
Everyone came, reviewed all their qualifications.
Yeah.
And then on the eleventh day of the vote, I sent you it on email.
Yeah, I know, I'm just letting everybody know what what we're out there. So I guess again, as I said, we'll start at the at the the board here. If you've had some time to um to look at the information sent out from the the parties present here. Uh anyone have uh?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to s- can if could I start?
Feel free.
Uh I have I I have thought about this a great deal since uh this all came about and so forth. But to begin with, I would personally like to um and publicly thank Vin Ritchie uh for the years and time he has given to this town on the planning board. And I would like to recognize that as well as um Scott LeBlank and Mark Dimmock who both have served previously on the planning board. Um my concern and to the point I'm I wish to make is one of the things that we have been consistent on here is we we're not getting volunteers et cetera, but we are constantly talking about we need new blood, we wanna get new more people, new people involved in the town and so forth. And uh I think that's vital. Um with all due respect to the members of the planning board, my my feelings is a strong feeling that by going with Mister LeBlank et cetera, we're we're countering what the town itself voted for. Uh and quite handily voted for. I think a message was sent by the town that they.
Wait, let me just clarify, what do you mean voted for?
Well, when they uh voted uh in the past election where Vin was defeated, okay?
Oh, 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 okay.
I think what they were the message was we want some new blood, we want you know, we want changes uh specifically in the planning board. And I personally support that and I think it would be wrong of us taking nothing away from Scott uh and and what you gentlemen have uh talked about. I think it would be wrong of us to go against the way the town voted. I think it is I think it's like thumbing the nose at the town. They gave us a message and I think we we should live by it and see see what happens. And uh I for one am very impressed with Mister S- Steiger Steiger Steiger. So that uh I feel strongly that um we should not go against the message that the town sent. It would would just be sending them the wrong message. And I think to get some new blood on the planning board, we've already bill is now on there. This is can be nothing but positive, so that's my feeling on that. Scott was also voted out uh prior.
Against Craig.
Yep.
Tom, what was the what was the what was it unanimous?
Cause it would be.
No, it was three, uh myself, Tom and Kendall were for Scott.
In your folder.
Fred, um yeah.
In the back of it.
It's in the binder.
Yeah, it's in there.
Three, two. Oh, okay.
Yeah, to that point, Jamie and so forth. Uh I think by putting S- Scott on it, it's to 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 the people, it's they're gonna say business as usual. We're just going back. We we don't wanna go back. We want it. We want some changes. So I think that's important that we don't ignore what the town is saying.
Okay, we're still sort of at the table here. Anyone else wanna comment on this? Jamie or Pat or Mike?
No, I mean I I don't know. It seems funny how originally when Mister Steiger submitted his first letter that um that was I think right after the election. Mark Dimmock had originally said he was not interested. Then all of a sudden he's interested again once Mister Steiger um submitted his letter. Um and then all of a sudden these other people come up. Um that's only my concern. How long was Scott on there? Was he there for a year to fill it? I think to fill.
Year and a half.
He was appointed and then was out.
To fin- fill a term, right? Cause somebody had resigned or it wasn't full. Okay.
Year and a half or so.
Uh okay, um anyone else at the board here, table?
No, I just I just I echo what what Jeff says. I think I I understand the rationale behind Scott having some experience, but you know, nothing personal with Scott. I don't really know the guy, but he was voted out by the town and replaced Mister Boyce in it and then uh Vin was voted out. So I do agree that the town has had some mandate, so uh I'm happy to see some new blood and people who are interested in in from here.
No, actually Mister Steiger, since he's he has been attending some of our meetings, um he obviously is a knowledgeable guy. I don't think um experience is actually necessary. He seems like he could very well understand the bylaws of the town, just like any other member that's new to a board. Is new to it, so they have to learn it, you know? Um that's my opinion.
Mm-hmm. Okay, if nothing else from the board here, I'll sort of open it up for discussion. If you guys wanna start, if you guys are interested in saying anything?
No, say whatever.
Francois, you interested in in commenting anything on here?
Uh again, I appreciate the fact that uh you have accepted my na- my 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 letter. Uh I reiterate that I respect uh uh the decision that the planning board took. And I have no issues with regards to how they came about that decision. Uh they were very respectful in the questioning that they asked me and for all intents and purposes, it beats perfect rationale that you know from a planning board perspective that it shows uh the candidity that you did. My intention really here is is to provide a as you say, fresh blood, try to look at things in a in a in a maybe in a slightly different way. I'm not saying that I have a uh an interest. I'm not a real estate agent, as I mentioned earlier, also I do not own a quarry or anything of that nature. Uh but I do have an interest in this town and I've been here for the last twenty years. Uh I'm getting to a stage in my life where I have a little bit more time, uh and I would like to give back to the ta- to to the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um I have spoken with individuals uh who have uh a great deal of dealings with the planning board. Uh and so um they have informed me in terms of how the protocols work. Clearly I do not know all of the rules and procedures as Mister Galante uh mentioned earlier. I have to make sure that I uh learn those. Uh but I'm willing to learn. Uh and that's 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 part of the characteristic, I think, of anybody who wants to be part of this town. And so from that perspective, uh I would still encourage you to think about my uh being a uh potential candidate for this year. And I would uh I would appreciate being appointed as a member of the, an associate member of the uh of the planning board.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm open to questions.
Okay.
Just a point, one point to bring up. This is only an associate member to act only if there's a special permit. He's not an associate member of the planning board.
Yeah.
He's only an associate member who would act if on a special permit and that person would only act if one of the other members either wasn't included or some
Yeah, understood.
or ex- 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 okay, so.
As long as you get a super majority is my understanding, Tom. Take that.
Right, yeah.
Thanks. So so uh okay, uh I didn't really speak to.
But you're sorry, I understand. It's not an associate member of the planning board, it's an associate member of the planning board for special permits only. If we have no special permits, they won't.
I think.
You're not a member.
There's nothing.
Understood. And so sort of my opinion on it, so I guess I'll lead off with I I don't necessar- I don't like the concept of uh going against a body that's voted a certain way that's gonna be dealing with somebody. I don't overall don't like that concept, just to start off with there. However, um just based on what you just said right there, meaning that it's not necessarily a core member and we've got a new face in town who wants to learn the processes, who will be there to learn the processes and maybe eventually get to the point where he's a full-time member, you know, that sort of thing. Factoring in what Jeff had said about um you know the the vote, factoring in some of the comments from the survey that went out, I mean all those sort of stuff together. I just I I think that that would be my uh my opinion as well. So I I don't know if anyone has any further they wanna say or if we wanna get this to a vote.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mister Francois Steiger to the alternate planning board position.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, Tom, how many s- do you have any special permits this year?
So far?
Well, I last year.
Last year, yeah.
This year.
We had the uh Marinelli pit and the solo.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay, so there's nothing.
Nothing on the table.
I don't know so far. Nothing so far, though. Okay.
I'm sorry, we're working with you. I'll be calling you and you can talk to me about my great contract.
Alright, uh wage authorizations, that's probably in our back pocket.
Yeah, it is.
So the wage authorization Friday tonight is for Chief Perrin. It's part of his his contract that he negotiated with um Brian. Right right as I was getting on, there was an evaluation for uh his performance. So I I paid some deference and spoke with Brian about about his performance since I wasn't here for the entirety of the term. But I've also uh spent some time trying to understand Chief Perrin's operations, worked with him in terms of uh helping to make sure that this evaluation was was fair and honest and have given uh my feedback on hi- on his performance and rated him to be uh an asset to the community and to exceed standards. There were some a couple areas uh that we talked about setting for goals for, I wouldn't say improvement, cause they were still exceed standards, but um overall incredible asset to the community and believe he's uh deserving of of what's in his contract, which is a small but worthy merit raise. And obviously attached the evaluation for you to review.
And this was negotiated right from the contract too, right, for him?
It is. So it is contingent on the on the evaluation.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Which we completed in mid-July.
So is a motion in order at this point?
Yeah, so I I can make a motion to uh approve the uh wage or salary authorization as presented for Dennis Perrin.
Yeah. I'll second the motion.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is Joyce coming back?
I don't know.
Oh.
No, I don't think so.
I thought it at at this point.
Twenty-eight, twenty, so.
Alright, committee updates, uh Q E M P task force, we just received our, did you get a copy of that?
Did, I was just gonna show you.
Oh yeah, so a hundred and thirty pages, uh draft copy of the Quabin Educational Municipal Partnership. This was done by the C M R P C in conjunction with the M R P C and the Q E M P. How about that? And uh we have just received it and it was just sent to, it was sent to Dave DeChamps and I the other day, 'cause we're co-chairs on this thing. And then it went out this morning to everybody else who's on the um uh Q E M P and then whether that's and then peripheral as well and other townspeople and and school people. And then there's a a a timeframe that we've got to review it and provide comment and um August fifteenth or something, is that a date? Okay, August fifteenth. And uh and that's it, if anyone wants to uh
I'm not ready yet.
Okay, it's it's this thick. It's sitting on my my passenger seat.
Have you gone through it at all?
What's that?
Have you gone through it?
I printed it out. I scrolled a million miles an hour through it and saw uh cool graphics and photos and everything else, 'cause they just did a, they did a really good presentation job, but I I know nothing about the content.
Can we upload that to the website, to the town website?
Uh that was a question.
It's the draft.
Draft, so I sort of
The draft, okay.
Yeah, so until the Q E M P gets it back to them for their comments, I think that'd be
Okay. Alright.
that'd be, good, okay, good. But then we'll do that. And then uh Town Center Committee, I already sort of went into our meeting last Thursday about uh the the capital improvement plan and what we came up with is, I think there were like four of them, uh I'm not gonna be able to call it up right now, but basically it was um this again, these again, these are charges over five thousand dollars that are in conjunction with our charge. So our charge was whatever it was three years ago when it was first first given in there. And these um were, the first one, we had to sort of rate them as well, um was, I do have it, uh beautification of the cen- so this is sort of assuming um all the other work is done or in while it's getting done. Beautification of the center, school, library, town offices, frontage, benches, historic signage, town welcome signs, town common, Clark's Corner, that all that sort of stuff as one sort of project ask to go into for some capital amount for fifty thousand dollars in four years from now, you know, something like that. Uh and the form that you fill out says what it could be tied to and this would be essentially tied to the town center. But this this some of this has to do with, I don't know if you guys remember, Tom Robinson brought up the the sort of ratty um shrubs and stuff in between the school and the library, this would be a piece of that too. So anyway, that was one of them. Uh new playground equipment for Rainbow Zen Playground, which might fall parks, but uh we've talked about it anyway. Main Street lights, so as part of the town center design, we're putting empty conduits in the sidewalks. So empty conduits with risers at certain locations in the sidewalk, so that in it's cheap, cheap money, in the event in the future that somehow um 'cause we can't get any state funding for the um uh lights, because that's not included as part of the um way that they fund these projects, as we've talked about before. However, we did just find out recently that there is an option for complete streets funding for lighting, so that's sort of a new program they have. I don't know if you knew that, Ryan. So and and then we also, so the main street lights was one, a high street sidewalk, so we're gonna have all these this roads done and all this, you know, is it is that sort of the next piece of things is is getting a a way uh up up high street um to 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 redo that. Uh Brigham Street sidewalk and then a Williamsville sidewalk. So those are the things that we felt that were incorporated within the town center that might be something that if there were funding for and there was energy for that over the next five years or so would be more than five thousand dollars and would be something that would get considered. So, that's it, that's uh that's the update on that. Actually, sorry, let me just give you one more update, 'cause I gave you the Travis one before. I also asked T E C to give me an update on where things stand with current work out there that's not related to Route sixty-eight South. All additional surveys complete and the base plans have been updated for both Elm Street, for the complete streets, and the extension of the town center project on Gardner Road, extension meaning to the rec field. Um we have been progressing with the Elm Street sidewalk design, expect to have fifty percent submittal for your review by the end of the month. We're also coordinating with Mass D O T regarding logistics of the revised submittal for the Main Street Gardner Road uh extension, targeting submittal in early mid-September. So those projects are ongoing too and you know, there's a chance there's a Elm Elm Street sidewalk, you know, you know, potentially this fall, but you know, we'll see.
Might sneak in.
Might sneak in.
Dan, what was the status with the sidewalk to the rec field?
That is now Elm Street. If you recall, when Mass D O T bumped up Route sixty-eight the next year,
Yeah.
they said, well, that means we can't quite do all of sixty-eight north, we're gonna stop at the rec field, 'cause that's what's gonna fit in our funding.
Okay.
So you, as a Town Center Committee, Town Center Project, you've gotta incorporate that in now and we don't wanna do a sidewalk now, because
Oh, okay.
it just, we'd be potentially ripping stuff out and it just couldn't get all figured out. So we talked to the State Complete Streets Program, said hey, we know you approved it to go up, you know, to the rec field, can we bring it over to Elm Street instead? And they eventually said yes and we worked the design in costs into it and it all worked out.
Oh, that would be good. How far down though?
All the way down uh, what's the name of that road?
Parsons? Parsons, yeah.
Par- Parsons, yeah.
Mm, nice.
That might get done this year.
Yeah.
Should be nice.
Yeah.
Nice.
Oh, really?
And it'll connect to the new piece of side, the tiny piece of sidewalk.
Yeah, in the corner.
Oh, Phil Strilt, Phil Churchill, he's like, I didn't know they were gonna do that, right in front of his the business, he didn't know that was coming, he thought they were gonna end on the other side.
Yeah. Just wanna pull it up the street.
Keep going, no, guys, guys, keep on. The paving crew. Alright, that's uh committee updates. Alright, we got some minutes.
Make the motion to accept the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen.
This is an executive session.
Executive session, yes.
So we'll do a roll call here, no mic. Um
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Dan, yes. Mike?
Abstain.
Pat?
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie? Okay. New business? Yeah, let's do a new business one.
Uh just in case, but
Okay.
I I do have, I did promise you a um building inspector commissioner update and examples in this meeting.
Yeah.
Um some things, I don't wanna say fell apart, 'cause that's dramatic, but um wasn't ready for this for this meeting to present. Uh and also found out that our current commissioner will be with us until um almost Halloween, so we we do have some time. So if we did have to do anything, it would be in this early September timeframe, so at our next meeting I'll have some options to go with.
Okay. Uh old business, anybody?
Yeah, is any, s- when they were talking about the tower, I was recalling that guy coming in from A T and T, is anything Vin said about that?
I thought of that ten times since Kevin Brewer came in.
Yeah, as soon as they started talking about that, um nothing more?
No. No, I haven't I haven't asked him either, I see him all the time, all the time, but
Okay, I was just wondering.
Nope.
Okay.
You do you even know what we're talking about?
I don't.
Okay. Guy came in from A T and T, um works in town, uh not works in town, works for A T and T, lives in town.
He's an engineer, right?
Flagrove, he's an R F engineer, a rotating frequency engineer, which I got into a Wikipedia hole, sucked in, figuring out what that was. And um I still don't understand it, but uh has to do anyway with um uh how you bounce around um uh cell phone way, you know, mobile, whatever. And they are thinking about a pilot project where you don't put a tower up, but you go onto a structure, a municipal building or whatever, and it's a little one. And it just sort of makes in the localized area better coverage versus having to have some giant tower that actually does that. So it was cool, it was a cool idea, it was like a had never been done before sort of thing and and uh looks like it still hasn't been done.
Black City's used that a lot
Yeah.
because they have a lot of obstruction.
Yeah.
New York City, Boston, places like that.
Uh to
Yeah.
It's just a lot easier to to cover it, because otherwise you have enormous amounts of objects that
Yeah.
Yeah.
you're venting.
So a- actually, un- under old business, I'll just ask, I mean, there's this letter from a resident about a concern about uh their perk test. Has anything been come up about this?
Right.
So the information has been given to the Board of Health and they are uh going to discuss it at their next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
Yeah, very unfortunate.
Okay. Alright, is there any uh public or press question and answer?
Just a very quick question.
Sure.
Uh I n- I remember, uh I think it was two meetings ago, there was a subject about a a mortgage that was going to be um where the town was the second and
Hmm.
is that still pending or is that been resolved?
No, we approved that um and we were s- I think originally it was presented we were gonna be third in line
Yes.
and we were second.
Yes.
So we were second and stayed second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
The the at the s- when we did approve it, we were second.
You you remain the second?
So we w- yeah, so we remain the second.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah. Yep.
I just remembered that and uh
Yeah, it ended up they just needed our approval to refinance the mortgage.
Yeah.
Got you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, um any else for public? Do we wanna peel back to anything we didn't get to?
Yes, so the uh state war- warrant for the primaries, um you saw Joyce in here earlier, it was to approve this this warrant for the state primaries and to have second sign it to send.
Yeah.
She said that that she believes it to be to be accurate and current for your for your signature. Be the first time I do one of these, so um I would have been relying on her expertise, but she believes this to be ready.
Do you know if she has to be present for the signing, for any sort of notary or sealing process? I I might kinda made that up, I just trying to add a wrinkle to the rant.
We don't.
Usually like
We've we've signed them before without her here.
Oh, okay, that was I was gonna ask if you've done that, but with these, with the um poll petitions, it's the same kind of thing that she does.
Mm-hmm.
Or with the town warrants, it looks
So, I mean, what's the worst that happens? Is you wake up tomorrow and
Call you and we do it again, right?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the
And there's five
state election warrant as
Five, okay.
that's uh submitted.
And you have a signature line.
I'll start, I'll start in that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 Before you walk in, we're talking about, I guess Hershey Park is closed right now from flooding?
Yeah.
I heard that, yeah.
You guys
We were just down there.
Yeah.
Craziest weather, it's like sunny for ten minutes and then pouring rain.
Oh, man. The most annoying ride home, hour and a half or whatever, 'cause how many times I had to mess with the windshield wipers? From interim to fast interim to slow interim to fast to slow to off, squeak.
Get some Rain-X.
Mm.
I get the windshield washer fluid Ra- uh Rain-X.
Oh.
Of course, but
So you don't even use your wipers?
Sometimes.
Something else you can add.
You're gonna be going so fast.
Like a duck?
Yeah.
Need to slow down.
Okay, well, um we have an executive session item?
Yes.
Alright, so I make a motion to uh move into executive session for purpose number two, to conduct strategy sessions, preparation negotiations, non-union personnel to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations by non-union personnel uh in reference to Chief Robert Hayes.
Second motion?
With the uh intention not to
Intent, there there is intention not to return to public session.
Second motion.
Uh discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
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 That, yes.
Okay.
May I? Uh Jeff, thanks very much for taking the bull by the horns and
Oh, yeah, absolutely welcome.
putting the question.
Thanks.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate your uh willingness to volunteer.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. I look forward to working with you and uh the group here. Thanks again.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Thank you.
Take care.
Yeah, just push the little thing next to it.